Of course, my first thought was it was everybody else's fault, certainly not mine.
Right, Madam Chair, we are going live and we'll keep an eye out for Commissioner Rogers for you.
Alrighty. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our January 4th, 2022 work session of the Washington County Board of Commissioners. With me this morning is Commissioner Pam Trees, Commissioner Nefisify, and Commissioner Jerry Willy, and we're expecting Commissioner Roy Rogers to join us momentarily. We have a very full agenda today, and this being our first full work week back after the December break, this week we have all of our meetings. So after this morning's work session, we'll convene as the Washington County Housing Authority, followed by the Board of Commissioners, for the business meeting for Washington County and Board of Directors of Clean Water Services. Then, we will reconvene back in work session. So, to start things off, we have Board and Leadership Communication. Who of the Commissioners would like to kick us off here in our new year? Go ahead, Commissioner Willy.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. It's been a nice couple-week vacation, and so I hope everybody enjoyed their time off. I certainly did, had time with family. But as you said, it's 2022, and we're back to start. So the calendar has been filled up, and we're ready to go back to work. There's just a couple of things that I want to touch on. One is a Fair Board meeting tomorrow night, and there's some other meetings. But I think the most important thing is to give you an update. And if I'm being redundant, and you've already seen all of this in the news, then I apologize, but I wanted to bring you an update on the two fires that were in downtown Hillsborough over this past weekend. Some of the information I was able to get from the city of Hillsborough, Saturday's apartment fire was on Main Street, impacted three households and 11 children. So there are a number of organizations trying to work together to find housing for them, and I know community action is involved as well. So I'll give you a little bit more information in just a second. And then on Sunday was the Four Line Fire Downtown, did considerable damage to the Wheel Arcade between Second and Third. Again, that was a large enough fire that we had participation. Hillsborough Fire and Rescue had participation with Banks Fire, Cornelius Fire, Forsgrove Fire, Gaston, Portland Fire, and TVFNR. So a large fire. They all did a great job of containing that, but there are a number of businesses that have been impacted as well. I believe I heard this morning, just a second, and I will give you what that is. It looks like 20 to 25 businesses on Main Street have been impacted. So as you may or may not know, also, I am a board member of the Hillsborough Community Foundation, and we started the Hillsborough Community Relief Fund in 2020 to help those with businesses and residents that were impacted by the pandemic. We have continued to keep that relief fund open. We are working with Hillsborough Downtown Business Organization and other organizations to channel the funding through the Hillsborough Community Foundation, and then we will make sure we reach out and provide some grant money and other necessary things for the families as well as the businesses. So if anyone is so inclined to make a contribution to help those two pretty devastating fires, go to Hillsborough Community Foundation, and it'll give you the information there. And the good news is that makes it a charitable contribution for you and a tax deduction. So I think that was the most important thing. And then, of course, I drafted the resolution on public safety, and when the Chair is ready, we can have that conversation as well. That's all I got.
Anyone else with any updates you'd like to share? Go ahead, Commissioner Trees.
I don't have a lot to share, enjoy your time off, but I do want to let you all know that I was under the assumption that I was going to be the AOC District 8 Chair this coming year. I am not. That's a two-year appointment, apparently. So I will continue in the Vice Chair role. So I know I was surprised as well. But I will continue to work with Sonia Fisher there. So I just wanted to let everyone know that.
Okay, we'll make sure to get that committee chart updated. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Phi.
Actually, can you hold on one second? I have to let my childcare in.
Okay, I'll go first. How's that? So not allowed to add, the week of December 20th, I had the December monthly Chair Mayor's Meeting, and we had the opportunity to hear from Matt Krieger to go over the broadband study scope of work to make sure that mayors and city councils are aware of that. And in addition, Clean Water Services, Mark Jockers and Tracy came in and provided all of the mayors with an update on the Scoggins Dam Seismic Replacement Project. I also want to thank Dr. Kim Rep for joining us briefly to entertain any questions with regard to the state of affairs of COVID, as well as the Omicron variant in our community and forecast. And now here we are in a bright, shiny new year, and we'll go from there. So Commissioner Phi.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Sorry about that. Somebody knocked the door, and my door is not technologically savvy yet, where I can just open from my phone, as some people have these days. Good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year. I'm excited to say that tomorrow will officially be one year since my sworn in, and I spent few days reflecting on my first year as a county commissioner. And as COVID has impacted every aspect of what we do at the county, I wanted to take a moment to recognize and thank the staff of Washington County for everything that they have done. Even today, the presence of, and I probably will say this name wrong, Omicron, continues to grow, and staff are working diligently to ensure our residents have access to vaccine and ensure that we continue to focus on our economic recovery from this pandemic. Over the years, I hosted District 1 Town Halls and civic engagements, and our community have expressed their interest in equity in transportation, affordable housing, and alternative shelter options, public safety, access to elected officials. So as you can imagine or suspect, I hope to continue and to build on that work, and to continue to center the voices of our community and our constituents. So I'm really looking forward to working with each one of you, and look forward to the next year, what we can accomplish as a board. And thank you for your service.
Wonderful. Alrighty, we have a few items that are in the packet.
Chair Harrington, sorry for the interruption, but Commissioner Rogers is here.
Yes, Commissioner Rogers, did you have anything to add? He didn't unmute, so I assume.
No, thank you. No, it's all on the weekly agendas that we did. Welcome after one year. I was reflecting back, as you said that, on the one year that I had a few years back, and it was an interesting period of time. I know how you're drinking from a fire hose. It's very different at the county. So make number two even better than number one.
Alrighty, so before we switch over to leadership communication, why don't we touch on the three items that are the supplemental items in our packet? The first in the list is the Scoggins Repayment Partner Funding Support Letter. I hope that all Commissioners have had an opportunity to review that letter. Our staff is just looking for a thumbs up to proceed with that letter moving forward, so that Washington County and our other repayment partners will sign on to this. Commissioners, any questions or thumbs up? Okay, you got five thumbs up. There you go. And we got thumbs up right back from our great team. All right, the second item is a draft resolution from Commissioner Willy. So Commissioner Willy, I'll turn it over to you, but I will first note that it does relate, or seems to relate, to our involvement to date with Reimagine Oregon. So one suggestion is that you introduce it, and then we pause on any further discussion of it until later in today's work session agenda. But that's just an option. I'll turn it back over to you, as this is your resolution.
No, I think that's a good idea, and certainly a good segue for that. So I'm supportive of that. The purpose of the resolution was, I have felt for some time now, that we have not sent our Sheriff's Department, our public safety folks, a strong enough message, actually a conflicted message, considering the relationship and the work that we're doing with Reimagine. So I wanted to put together, and I worked with the Sheriff's Department on this, a resolution that just basically reemphasized that we are certainly supportive of our public safety department and are not intending to defund that department at any time in the future. So this resolution is designed to do exactly that, just to send a strong message. And we can certainly have that conversation when we talk about Reimagine. I'm perfectly fine with that, because I think there is a good segue there. So thank you for that, Chair.
Alrighty, well, with no further comments, we'll carry that forward to later in the day. The third item, myself, Commissioner Trees, and Commissioner Phi, started our conversations back in December, recognizing that Ken Gibson would be departing as mayor or that position early. And so we wanted to make an effort to recognize his leadership and support. So I put together a certificate of appreciation. Our great staff beautified it, which I really appreciate. So it's in our packet. Commissioner Rogers has signaled a thumbs up of support of that. So Commissioners, okay, so staff will apply the digital signatures, and we'll take it from there. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to leadership communication. Ms. Angie.
Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. First, I'll begin with the COVID update relative to our workforce. We do have a delay in testing data over the winter holidays. So a full picture of cases amongst our workforce is not quite clear yet. However, I can share that at this point in time, we do have 18 employees who are off work in isolation after being tested positive for COVID-19. Unfortunately, this is an increase in 16 more employees above my last update in 2021. So this is an unfortunate turn. However, this increase does also reflect the increase that we are seeing in our community council as well. So key messages still: get vaccinated, get boosted, wear a mask, and maintain social distancing as well. Chair, it looked like you were going to ask a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering. So we're back at the, let's see, category, significant transition or transmission or high. So I just want to remind ourselves that telecommuting is encouraged for each of the departments. If you could remind us real briefly what we should be expecting with regard to face-to-face constituent support within our various departments? And I want to reiterate to my colleagues that I really appreciate how we have embraced this virtual technology, and how important it is to stay healthy. I have talked to some folks over the last week and know of at least two people in the last week who've come down with COVID, who were boosted, you know, wearing masks, so forth. So please be extra careful. While we know if you've been vaccinated and boosted, the severity is decreased, you're all in really important roles. So if there's anything more we need to consider to ensure we're all A-OK, please let's entertain it. Thank you. So Ms. Angie, is there anything else that you want us to be mindful of relative to services that community members can or should utilize?
So our lobbies still remain open, and we do have all safety protocols in place, such as social distancing, masking within our buildings. We do encourage community members to use online services if possible. So this business protocol still continues, which is the same that we were using in Quarter 4 of last year. We don't anticipate changing it, because I feel we've really fine-tuned our safety protocols, and we are doing our best to ensure employee safety. To the point, also on telecommute, we are continuing to encourage telecommute with our employees minimizing the need for in-person meetings and keeping those meetings to a low number, preferably six or under. I do want to provide an update of the severe weather that we had seen over the last few weeks and give a shout-out to a few of our departments. So our Land Use and Transportation Department, all three of Washington County's snow zones were activated for several days last week. I do want to say several days. So I really appreciate the 24/7 operations of our LUT team. Road Maintenance and Operation crews were out in force during this event. Fleet and Facilities, during the inclement weather, Fleet operations worked around the clock to keep our plows and emergency vehicles operational. Given the intensity of use of sanders, plows, and de-icers, they needed ongoing repair and maintenance. So this is sometimes the unseen from our community eye, but it is very important to keep our roads safe and navigable. We're thankful for our Facilities crews for keeping all of our walkways clear, public space open, and our buildings warm and operating for all those who are visiting and working in our county buildings during this time. And I do want to recognize our Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Office deputies, assisted fire and rescue personnel at the scene of several vehicular spinouts and crashes throughout the week, in addition just to their normal patrols and normal operating. So huge appreciation to our deputies. Severe weather shelters were in operations. We activated two severe weather shelters that provided 24-hour care throughout our winter event. The Salvation Army site in Hillsborough sheltered 35 people as of Friday. The Beaverton Community Center site sheltered 100. With the improved weather this week, both shelters deactivated yesterday. In addition, Tigerd Library, Tuolatin Library, and Wanita Pole Center in Tuolatin all served as daytime shelters last week. Regionally, over 500 people sheltered at half a dozen overnight shelters in Portland during this event. Washington County did answer a call for support from Mount Noma and Portland to support their severe weather sheltering operations with additional volunteer staff during this time. So huge kudos to our staff that made this happen, and for regional efforts. And I do also want to lift up, I believe the Board had received an email about the 21-day racial equity challenge. This is a great opportunity for us to continue our learning in our EDI efforts. The Board had expressed interest in additional learning and tools relative to equity, so this could be just one of those opportunities for you. We have invited staff to participate in this habit-forming challenge. I myself am participating as well. This challenge invites us to complete 21 days of short activities. Typically, these activities take 15 to 30 minutes over the 21-day period. These activities include readings, videos, and podcasts. Details have been emailed to you and also are posted on Horizons. And so I would welcome you to join. It is actually fun, because our employees are posting their thoughts and reflections on the readings and the learnings. And so we're really creating this a shared learning environment. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. And I also want to make note of the fact that Ms. Angie and Mr. Carr have friends and family who live in the Boulder area that were impacted by the significant wildfire that really decimated, what, over 1,000 structures in that community? And our thoughts go out to you and to everyone you know. So, thank you. Hello, Mr. Carr. Any legal updates that you'd like to share with us in this public session?
Yes, thank you for your kind wishes, Chair Harrington. And yes, I have a few things I'd like to tell you. First, on the COVID vaccine mandate, the federal government, it's technically in effect right now, but not in effect in Oregon, because it can't be in effect in Oregon, for us at least, until Oregon OSHA adopts it. Oregon OSHA is not acting, and federal OSHA is not acting. The Supreme Court required all briefs to be in by last Friday, the 30th. They're hearing oral argument this Friday, the 7th. Justice Kavanaugh decided not to take any action on the Sixth Circuit's decision to lift the stay, to defer to the entire court. So the court will make a decision as a body on whether or not to reimpose the stay. It's hard to tell when they'll do that, but they will hear oral argument on the 7th. That will be available for anybody who's interested in listening on the internet. However, I caution people, you can't tell much from an oral argument, except what questions people are asking. It's very difficult to decide, see what an ultimate decision is going to make based on the questions at oral argument. Second, as you know, we've been hiring attorneys. I'm happy to announce that we have reached agreement to hire Rob Bovet, who many of you know is the former Executive Director of the Association of Oregon Counties. He was an assistant, before he was that, he was an Assistant County Council in Lincoln County, and served as the elected District Attorney in Lincoln County. He'll be joining our team later this month, and I'm very excited to have his experience as part of our growing team. And then finally, as you know, the opioid litigation settlement is up for approval. I can't tell you how much I appreciate the hard work that Brad Anderson is doing, not only for Washington County, but for the entire state. Over the holiday weekend, he was on the phone calling to try to make sure all of the jurisdictions in Oregon have signed on. We are very close to 100%. They've extended the deadline slightly. I think we will get to 100%, which will mean good things for our ability to help people with addiction in Washington County. That's my update. Thank you.
Yes, and please do share our thanks to Brad for his incredible dedication, diligence, and intellectual excellence in helping everyone understand the benefits of participating.
Thank you. We're lucky to have Brad on our team.
Yep, yep. That and the work that he's done on the supportive housing services work at the same time. Woo! Big love.
That's only the tip of the iceberg on all the work he's handling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Diane Taniguchi Dennis, CEO of Clean Water Services. Welcome to the new year.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good morning to the Board of Clean Water Services. Happy New Year, and it's great to be back as we start 2022. The team has been very busy with the snow and ice, as well as the rainfall that we're seeing. The current closure of I-84 is impacting our BioSolids program that we have in eastern Oregon. So we are activating our procedures to store BioSolids on-site. We're hoping that the corridor reopens, so we'll be able to continue to haul our BioSolids. On the COVID front, we currently have a significant increase in cases also. The team is managing currently six positive cases, and we have nine additional exposure cases, both vaccinated as well as unvaccinated team members. All are from home life over the holidays, so there's been no cases from the workplace. So we're able to continue to keep the workplace safely operating. All of our employees are managing their symptoms at home, and none are currently hospitalized, which is really great. And our thoughts are with them. We've been able to maintain business continuity as our people recover. We do have two employee vaccine clinics scheduled, one on January 11th at the ABC, and a second one on January 18th at Durham. And if any Board members would like to participate, please let Mark Jockers or myself know, and we can make arrangements. The team has already pre-planned their scenarios should the number of cases continue to increase, to make sure we have onsite staffing support for maintaining of regulatory compliance. It's been some really great pre-planning, and it's really served the district well. So I really want to do a shout-out to our incident command. I also want to recognize our team members that have been onsite full-time doing their work, because they need to be at the district facilities. And I'm going to fail to name them all, but I do want to do a shout-out to our lab team in particular. We need those samples for compliance, our environmental services team working with our industries, the Water Resources Recovery Team, got to keep those treatment plants operating, our field operations, to maintain services to our customers, as well as the Natural Systems Group, and our permitting and inspections team. And the team's really done well on a hybrid mode when we need to. So they're both in-site and off-site and telecommute, as well as our folks that are telecommuting. And it's been quite a year, and they've done really well and have accomplished a lot over this past year, and we are looking forward to 2022. We'll receive additional sewer monitoring data this week. Over the holidays, the testing is a little bit backlogged, but Dr. Williamson advised me that there is a continual increase in the sewer samples that we're seeing. But we're hopeful, and we'll get through this, and we'll do it all together. So thank you to the Board for your support and to the team.
Thank you to our three executive leaders for those updates. Commissioners, are there any last updates or mentions before we proceed with the remainder of the work session agenda before our Board meeting at 10:00? Okay, well then, let's get right to it. The next item is the Homeless Plan Advisory Committee assignments. If we could advance the staff members, Mr. Board Clerk, please? Oh, Comey, we have that audio.
Comey, let's try to have you log out and log back in. And Madam Chair, if you want, we can move to the Fair Board and then come back to Comey while we work out this technical change.
Alrighty, let's do that. Hopefully, Leah Perkins.
I'd like to know how you did that. How do you make your voice sound so fast and stuff like that? Maybe we could use that on some other Zoom meetings that, I don't know.
We'll leave that as a lesson for you to catch up with Mr. Colivar. Good morning, Ms. Perkins Hagley, Fairgrounds Advisory Committee.
Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. Happy New Year to you all. Yes, we have a Fairgrounds Advisory Committee. We have, and I just want to note really quickly that I was just pointed out, thank you, Commissioner Willy, that there is an error in the Fairgrounds Advisory Committee matrix. Daniel Pearson and Stephen Nagy, it shows that they expired in 2020, but their Board appointments are actually not expiring until 2023. So I just wanted to start So I just wanted to start off acknowledging and noting that error. But we do have five applicants for the Fairgrounds Advisory Committee for you to consider. Three being new applicants and two being existing members that have expired that are seeking reappointment. Deanna Palm is seeking reappointment along with Jennifer Rischlich seeking reappointment. And then we have Mitch Nussbaumer, Dave Perullo from the WCBA, and Brenda Kristoffer, who are also interested in serving on the FAC. You should have all of the applications in front of you. I just want to note that Jennifer Rischlich and Deanna Palm did not resubmit applicants. They just submitted emails with their request to be reappointed. Happy to answer any questions.
From my standpoint, it seems really logical to reappoint Deanna Palm and Jennifer.
Rischlich.
Rischlich, thank you. And then Dave Perullo from the Washington County Visitors Association, given his hiring with the retirement of Carolyn McCormick.
Yeah, I've had a lot of great conversations with Dave Perullo in the last couple of months, and he is really looking forward to being appointed to this board and is looking forward to your consideration.
Thoughts, Commissioners? Thumbs up or? Okay, alrighty.
Great, well, that's an easy one. I'll be back in two weeks for an agenda item for appointment for those members. If you're ready, we can move right along to the Fair Board.
Certainly.
Okay, so we have two vacancies on the Fair Board. And I think that we are just a little over 200 days away from the county fair, which is always exciting this time of year. We have one member that is that is expired, that is seeking reappointment. Bob Rollinger is seeking reappointment. And then we have had two other applicants that are interested in the Fair Board, Mitch Nussbaumer and Darlene Dick. I do want to point out that I have tried to reach Darlene Dick by a phone and email over the last several weeks. She applied for the Fair Board back in June, and I wanted to check to see that she was still interested, but I did not hear back from her. I will still continue to reach out to her if she is a person that you are interested in appointing. I think you might remember that Mitch Nussbaumer has applied for this board a couple of times in the past, and so it was good to see his application again.
Yeah, and I'll add the, one of the things that really interests me in Mitch's applying again is his experience with agriculture and with 4H, which I think would be most helpful at this juncture with the Fair Board. So it seemed logical to me to reappoint Mr. Rollinger and to add Mr. Nussbaumer. Commissioners, other thoughts?
One comment. Leah, and I know this is a broken record. We've talked about this over many, many years. To bring the eastern side of the county into the fold to more fully appreciate what the Fairgrounds has to offer as well as the fair. It should be nice if we could ever get an applicant from down south. Is it just that no one is applying or has an interest? Can you, once again, just, I know you've told me before, but just once again, for the record, say what's going on.
Sure. We, I don't, in the 20-year history of my employment here at the Fairgrounds, we have not had somebody from your district apply for the Fair Board. And we have even attempted to go out and try to find some members that are interested. And I think that it's a little bit of the idea that the Fairgrounds is just so far away from your district. I don't, I don't think that, I think now that we meet virtually, that that might be a little bit easier to get participation for members from your district where prior, you know, driving over to Hillsborough and back, you know, was a big commitment. So maybe we'll have better luck in the future. And I would certainly love your, and would welcome your ideas on people who might be interested in applying.
No, thank you, and thank you for once again going over that. I've tried as well. I know when Dick Scouton was in District 1, he tried as well. And it just seems like this eastern part is not as inclined to participate, which is unfortunate. It's such a big resource. Anyway, just throw that in.
Thank you. All right, well, unless there are any more comments, I will be back in two weeks for Fair Board appointments as well.
Could we also get a brief mention on Gary Seidel's term? In the chart, it says it expired in December of 2021. I thought we did a reappointment last year.
You did. I apologize. I'll update that matrix as well. You did appoint, reappoint him last January, so he will go through 2023.
Alrighty.
Great.
Commissioners, good to go? Okay, terrific. Thank you, Leah.
Thank you. Bye bye.
So, Mr. Board Clerk, do we have Comey back or do we need to switch to libraries?
We are adding Comey back right now, so let's see if that worked.
Mr. Culivar, are you ready for us?
Yes.
Oh, and there's your marvelous voice.
Happy New Year. Good morning, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Comey. I'm a Housing Services. So for your consideration today, we have appointments to the H-PAC, which is the Homeless Plan Advisory Committee. This is a board that is appointed by you, a committee that is appointed by your Board of Commissioners and serves as oversight for our work on homelessness. So in front of you today, and it's in the matrix, we have one vacancy for Citizen A-Large and four others that are current members whose terms expired December 31st. So we'll start with the four members that are seeking reappointment. And the first one is Community Corrections, which is Steven Berger. He's the Director of Community Corrections. He's seeking reappointment. And the staff recommends that he be appointed. The second one is Housing Authority Representative, which is Comey Culivar. The third one is a Hospital and Healthcare, Dr. Uno. And the last one is Entitlement and Mainstream Benefits, Philip Williams. The Citizen A-Large that we are recommending for your consideration is Robert Hurt. And Robert is from District 3. He works with justice-involved individuals, which is what makes his application compelling. He's also US Army Reservist. I think he was honorably discharged from the US Army as a reservist. He, his work is very extensive with respect to communities, case management, housing, homeless, Medicare, Medicaid. I mean, so that's his work. I mean, it's very strong alignment with our work. And he's African-American male. So in addition to the matrix, we had eight other, we had eight applicants, including Robert. And so as you can imagine, it was not an easy decision. We interviewed Annette Evans, who is not able to join us today. I and a number of others interviewed all the candidates. Some didn't make it, some declined, some withdrew, but we still had a very, very strong field. And we are pleased with the recommendation we have. And we plan to stay in touch with the other applicants in case openings come up in the future. In addition to that, there is a revision to the bylaws, which is attached, very extensive. I'm not sure how your board would like to approach the revisions to the bylaws.
Can we take one at a time?
Sure.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments with regard to the recommendations? I see one thumbs up, three thumbs, four, five thumbs. Okay, so we're all comfortable with acting on these recommendations and appreciate not only all the applicants, but the interview process, Mr. Culivar, that you and others have gone through for this. And now to the bylaws. I'll start off with, I appreciated the change table myself. Do you want to highlight the overall rationale for the changes and go from there?
Yes, so the rationale was the H-PAC will be working with our continuum of care and also supportive services. So we had committees, including people from Office of Equity and Inclusion and Housing and H-PAC members. Lots of discussion over many, many months. And a lot of the additions are very editorial. There are some significant pieces also. One, their role as oversight to the housing services. And two, and obviously their recommendations is what we bring forward to your board. We added language about racial equity, housing equity, health equity for county residents as part of their work with special attention on people and communities who historically have been disadvantaged. So that's a major addition. And by far, the main addition, well, I'm jumping ahead, but because I want to talk to the media part first, is number 17, where we talked about forming subcommittees. Subcommittees will be approved by the H-PAC members, and the members are free to join. And as you know, the body of work for housing and homelessness is extremely broad. I mean, we're all learning and some have more experience than others. But you know, there's justice-involved individuals, this addiction behavior of health. And then there's economics, just people don't make enough money to afford a roof over their head. So all of those require that we look at issues in more detail. And so we wanted to have the opportunity to form committees as needed among the H-PAC members to dive deeper into the issues. So that is a significant change. And I hope it meets your approval.
Comey, on the subcommittees, could you speak to concerns that how does the committee see itself ensuring that we don't end up siloing each of these high-demand areas such that the inner relations of the two, of the various ones, we want to make sure that we continue to have it all hold together. So what, what sort of discussions did you all have with, and do you see the bylaws enabling you to continue to be successful with the interlaced nature?
Yes, that's an excellent question, and indeed, it was a subject of many, many conversations. The compromise solutions was that the committee members be appointed and approved by the H-PAC themselves, and then they report back at the next meeting.
Got it, got it.
And there will be more meetings. So we certainly want to share the knowledge and expertise with all the members and then serve the community.
And logistically, H-PAC is an advisory committee to the department and to the board. And so I assume that the subcommittees will also be publicly available in all the materials, that the deep dive discussion, if I try to use your words correctly, will continue to be available to interested parties.
Yes, that is accurate.
Yeah, well, it's certainly with subcommittees, it does add to the staff work to make sure that everything is available and can be found conveniently and transparently. So I don't envy your task.
Yes, well, we have a team, a broad team with different skill levels, and then it comes together. But yeah, there will be plenty of transparency. There will be notes, there will be minutes, and then when decisions are made, we'll be reporting back to your board.
So I don't mean to monopolize the discussion here. Commissioners, any other questions, things you want to talk about with regard to these bylaws or areas of clarification? I'm not seeing any. I do want to highlight, I appreciate the work that H-PAC has done and will continue to do moving forward as Comey has described, particularly with regard to housing equity, racial and social justice. And I hope that we, when we talk about our board response to reimagine Oregon through our agenda item later in the afternoon, that one or more of us will remember to ensure that we highlight that work to that external group and audience. Because we truly are operationalizing this across the agency.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right, I think we're good to go on both of those items.
Okay, we'll be back in two weeks for the regular meeting. And before I sign off, I want to acknowledge the work of the committee members. Commissioner Tris is one of the committee members. And Annette Evans, who is not able to join us today, had done a lot of the work, as with Jess Larson and Ty Schufman and the entire housing team. So thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah, really great team. Thank you, Comey. So Ms. Angie, I know we're ahead of schedule. Is there any chance that Ms. Tattersall would be available to take care of the West Slope Library?
Yes, she is. Clerk Moss helped facilitate that. So Clerk Moss, if you can promote Ms. Tattersall. Thank you.
And happy New Year, Lisa, and to the whole library team. I know you're coming off of a busy time with school being out these last two weeks, so welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Happy New Year. I am just scrambling to get all my documents in order on my screen here, so just be with me one quick second. I apologize. Glad that we can take care of this this morning. Okay, so I, good morning. I'm Lisa Tattersall, the manager of Washington County Cooperative Library Services, also known as WCCLS. And I'm here today to review two reappointments to the West Slope Library Advisory Board with you all. WCCLS operates one public library directly in the county, and that's the West Slope Community Library. The Advisory Board for West Slope, their main purpose is to champion the library in the community, support inclusion and access to library resources for all, and to provide feedback to the West Slope Community Library Supervisor. And the Board of Commissioners appoints our Library Advisory Board members. So two current members of the Advisory Boards had their terms expire on June 30th, 2021, and due to an administrative oversight, that's totally my fault, on the part of WCCLS, I did not bring these recommendations for reappointment to the board in a timely manner. We lost track of it, and I apologize for that. And so these members have continued to serve in their capacity, but there have been no other applications submitted during this time. We are recommending the reappointment of these two members to their second and final term, which would expire on June 30th, 2024, and that would keep the membership at a total of five. Reappointing these two members will maintain some continuity on the board and provides a balance of experience and new perspectives. I'll just give you all a quick overview of the two folks who have been serving. So Julie Solomon is acting as the Chair of the Advisory Board. She's been an active patron for years. She was an active weekly volunteer, and she was absolutely instrumental in helping us draft the Library Advisory Board's first bylaws, which they haven't had until now. And they will come to your board on February 8th at work session. Julie has also helped develop new tools for the Advisory Board, like a welcome packet and other resources. She shares the library goals of connecting with new community members, increasing the diversity of the Library Advisory Board, and really supports the work of increasing the accessibility and inclusivity at the library. Julie identifies as why. Julie identifies as white and female. And then Joanne has, Chori Haft has been an active patron volunteer for 10 years. She's been on the Advisory Board since 2018, and she is really great at focusing her attention on getting results and helping to shepherd projects along for the Advisory Board. She's a great advocate for the library's work and really supports the library's work in increasing accessibility and inclusivity. And Joanne also identifies as white and female. If your board agrees to reappoint the recommended staff, the Advisory Board demographics would be 100% women. 20% of them would be youth. That was a math mistake in the packet. I think we had 16. And 0% people of color. I'm here to answer any questions you might have about these recommended reappointments. And then I'm currently scheduled to return on January 18th with an action item based on your conversation today.
Go ahead, Commissioner Trace.
Thank you, Lisa, for for this overview. I appreciate it. As the West Slope Libraries in my district, I would be happy to work in the future with you in recruiting people. So please, as 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 we look forward, I'd be happy to to participate there. The library is such a wonderful addition to our community, and I know how actively it's used. But I'd be happy to work with you if if I can be of help.
That would be fantastic. Thank you, Commissioner.
You bet. You bet.
Thumbs up, everybody. Terrific. Wonderful. Thank you for joining us early, and we've run through all of the various committee appointment items on the agenda. I think the other items on our work session agenda for later are meatier topics and need more time. So at this juncture, I would suggest that we pause our work session and come back at 10 o'clock as the Housing Authority Board of Directors, and then our business meeting from there. Sound good, everybody? Okay, well, we'll see you at 10 on a different Zoom link. Thank you.